I'd like to call and order the committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
It is our honor in this committee of the whole meeting to present school certificates, certificates from the school committee to our student school committee representatives who are joining us this evening. Leilani F. from Classical High, Victoria Samuel from English, and Madison Brown from Facto Leary. We are just so grateful for your contributions and leadership this year. It is a lot to take on to represent your fellow students, and you've done a wonderful job doing that. And I know our administration, my colleagues in the school committee, the school administration, really the whole city, I think, really values the student perspective, and we feel very grateful for you having brought that to us this school year. Thank you. So what I'd like to do is read this certificate, and then we can take a group picture, if that sounds good to everybody.
Sounds great.
All right. So the Lynn School Committee hereby extends with great pride and appreciation its most sincere congratulations to Leilani F. from Classical High School, Victoria Samuel from English, Madison Brown from Facto Leary, for your participation as a student school committee representative from their respective high schools for the Lynn School Committee for the 2022-2023 school year. The mayors and members of the school committee are honored to recognize your outstanding accomplishment and respectfully offer our warmest encouragement and best wishes for continued success in your endeavors. Congratulations.
So Stu, let's come forward, please. Good.
Why don't we present each of these certificates individually, and then we'll do a group picture. Sound good? So, Leilani F. Victoria Samuel.
Hold them open, please. Just like that. Yep. Awesome. This is straight. There we go. Now, I can't see your face, you need to be able to see mine, okay? So just move her a little bit. Ms. Gaitley? Okay? Okay, just a little bit more? Here you go. This way? Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. Excellent. Congratulations.
Going to call the personnel subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay. We have two job, new jobs that are posted on the agenda. The first one, Executive Director of Innovation and Grants. Yes, Ms. Gaitley.
I noticed on this posting, I was a little confused. On the second page, under minimum qualifications and then preferred qualifications. So I just want a little clarity here because under minimum it says master's degree in education leadership in relevant area, and then under preferred it says doctorate in education area. Do you want it to say that, or do you want it to say doctorate and both?
No, it should be master's exactly the way it's reflected. Master's degree minimum, preferred qualification would be the doctoral degree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes. Vassalanos.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
Just around this position. So the Executive Director of Innovation and Grants Management. This position, after reviewing it with Dr. Alvarez and having, you know, did some research on this particular position, it's instrumental to have. I strongly support this position. This position, it provides adapters to the partnerships that we need in industry. It's a resource gatherer, and especially around the areas of sustainable grant management and development. I think this position can help with many of the areas that we need to deploy the equity, the equity pieces that we need. And I just wanted to add that I do support this position. I appreciate Dr. Alvarez and everyone who put work on getting this together. Very thorough job, and I do, I do appreciate the education piece. I think the minimum and the preferred education qualifications are very important, and I look forward to seeing this position filled and who gets it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to move the position as written.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes, and I'd like it to be moved to the whole committee.
Oh, and move it to the whole committee. Sorry. I always forget that piece.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay. The next job posting is the approval to post a third deputy position. Yes. Mr. Dugan?
Thank you. While I'm all for this position, I definitely am. You know, being an educator myself, I can kind of understand, I guess, I don't want to say anxiety, but just how our teachers may feel seeing another deputy added, kind of seeing their classrooms and, you know, and things that they need as well. So I think it's, again, I'm all for this position. I do understand the need for it, but I also hope that we, you know, do get into the schools and we explain to our educators, you know, why do we need this, and this is why we have this position. I think that's going to be a critical part to it as well. Just to kind of relieve that, I don't know if anxiety is the right word, but that's the one I'll use of our educators, you know, adding another administrative position. Because, you know, it can perceive to be top-heavy, and we don't want that, and we want to make sure that, you know, we're being transparent about why we're adding things we are. So again, 100% for this position, just would advocate that we, you know, make sure we're explaining why we're adding it and, you know, showing flow charts and doing the things we need to do to explain it. So, thank you.
Dr. Magnolia?
Yeah, I just had a quick question about the extremely tight turnaround on the application deadline. Closing at noon on Friday, June 2nd, when it is May 11th right now, isn't even a month for the position being open.
Yeah, it should definitely be posted for 30 days regardless.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's a sample. It'll be updated as soon as it's approved for HR to then post.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I just want to call in. After a meeting with Dr. Alvarez, I do, I'm all for this third deputy, and it's very instrumental into our strategic planning moving forward. And I'm pretty sure we're gonna, once we put this in and set this in place, and think it's going to be very instrumental for us moving forward, you know, strategic planning and bringing us to another level.
Yes, Mr. Castellanos.
It's kind of just a housekeeping question, actually. So the post that I'm looking at right now, are these qualifications, responsibilities reflective of the other deputy positions?
This is the exact post that was approved by the school committee. It's just been updated in terms of date. There have been no modifications to the qualifications or the responsibilities. However, in the organizational chart, to provide transparency as we move forward, there'll be, you know, clear delineation of responsibilities between the three deputies so that one focuses on elementary, one focuses on secondary, and the other focuses on curriculum and instruction.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Gaitley?
I also want to support this position. As a secondary person, we need to have someone that's got the background, that understands exactly what our schools are going through, has that expertise. So I'm very happy to see this posted. I'm happy to see the organization charts that you shared with us, so that maybe not everyone in the room understands it, but we really get this, and it's a needed position for our school department. I'm glad you made this recommendation, Dr. Alvarez. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Yes.
I'd like to move the position as written and send it to the committee of the whole. Second.
Okay. And I just have one quick thing. On the qualification, it says experience in the secondary level, strongly preferred. You know, after what you just said, Dr. Alvarez, I would prefer that we took out preferred that, and strongly, it has to be secondary.
And this was, this was posted previously this way as well, but we could certainly accept the recommendation and remove preferred since it's specifically for a secondary.
It is, and we, every time we go to any secondary school, really, we're inundated of how they feel that they're, they really need that.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Matter of fact, I just went on the other day when it was the college bound and with Nausio Community College and the, you know, that was approached by so many people, and I didn't really want to say that there might be something in the pipeline that's going to help you, but. Okay. Then roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second. Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes. I just want to clarify, that was as amended as opposed to as written, that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to the open mic session. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to number, the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District in having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. So anyone signed up? Can we see on the list there?
No one so far.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. That concludes open mic. All right. All right. We'd like to call and order the ninth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
All please rise for a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence after.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Norma Perkins, retired teacher, passed away April 23rd, 2023. Gary Dantswitz, former teacher, April 28th, 2023. Thank you. First item is the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the policy subcommittee meeting on April 25th, 2023, and policy subcommittee meeting on April 27, 2023, and the eighth regular meeting on April 27, 2023. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, I just have it. Presentations.
Okay. As you are all aware, the school committee had put forward the resolution to eradicate racism, and so in that resolution, there was a requirement to implement inclusivity panels at the secondary level. We have been doing this for the past three years. The first, the second year, Breed Inclusivity Panel members recommended that we consider bringing it to the elementary school in preparation for students coming into the middle schools. And so we have three schools here who have piloted this at their schools. We have Druids School with Principal Patty Hebert, and then I'm going to let her introduce her team, and then we have Hood School with Principal Jessica Ikumu, and we have Tracy School with Principal Kenwi Valdez. So they are here to present to us the work that they've done this year. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Ikamu. I'm the proud principal of Hood Elementary School, and this evening, I'm happy to introduce to you members of Lynn's first group of fifth grade inclusivity panel students and mentors. Members of the Hood School, Druids, and Tracy School communities have worked hard all year to research and take action in our Lynn School communities as part of the youth participatory action research or YPAR process. So without further ado, I'd like to invite up our Hood Hawk fifth graders and their mentors to share more about what they've been working on this year, and then following them will be our Druids School members and then our Tracy School members. So Mrs. Peralta, I'll turn it over to you to share for Hood School.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Ms. Peralta, and I share the mentor responsibility with Ms. Santana, who's also here today, and we're just so proud of our fifth graders. The research question that they came up with was, how does cyberbullying and bullying lead to negative emotions? And these are fifth graders who are just about to go to middle school. So without further ado, I'm going to send it to Darazon.
Hello, my name is Darazon. Our research method was photo vision where we were taking candid pictures of our classmates. Then we decided to change it into interview because it was, it captured what we needed to achieve. Now I'll pass it to my classmate.
Hello, my name is Susan, and I interviewed one of my teachers, Mrs. Dago. I pictured because I know she would stand up for anyone if they're ever bullied. From my interview, I learned that there's no judgment when talking to a staff member about experiencing bullying. I will now pass it on to my friend Neffertiti.
Hi, my name is Neffertiti. For my interview with Mr. Malaya, I learned that staff members were also bullied. Now I will pass it to Alex.
Hi, my name is Alex, and I interviewed the clinical team because they help students. And from the interview, I learned that there is a process to assess the solution and problem solving with all, all the people involved.
My name is Ms. Santana. Thank you so much for having us, and we are delighted to be working with our students at Hood School. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Santana.
Hi, I'm Lisa Walden, and I work at Druids, and I'm going to introduce our student speakers today. We're not quite as prepared as that last group, so they've made a. But we have three student speakers today. We have Beer Day and Gyra and Victor. This is their first time ever being in a meeting like this, and their eyes are pretty big, so this is exciting for us. We did have a goal that is, it started with things like we wanted microwaves and stuff like that in our cafeteria, and it ended up being a really big goal about school safety. So we've, I hope you've listened to their goals today, and maybe at the end we can tell you a little bit about what we have already accomplished. Oh, and Marissa is also with us.
We are the, we are the Dolphin Squad.
We want a, we want to safely inside and outside the classroom.
We would like our schools to practice lockdown and other drills while outside of our classrooms since students may not always be in the classrooms during emergencies situation. They feel unprepared to handle such situations. We feel the current lockdown create more fear. We want more security and/or police officers visible on campus. We want to receive anti-bullying lessons in class so students do not feel afraid to report and have the skills needed to handle themselves when situations may arise.
We want a place to anonymously report bullying that occurs in school. We would like, we would like to have stronger consequences for bullying.
Any questions or comments, and please come see us on May 18 at Breed Middle School, 5:30 to 7:00.
Good job. So I just want you to know, we've interviewed our principal, and she's already agreed to put some anonymous boxes in our hallways, and she explained the, how students report bullying to the students so they understand more about the whole procedures. She's already, also, I'm going to do our first outside recess, school safety, or whatever you call those drills.
Lockdown drill.
Lockdown drills during recess so they can experience what that feels like, and she's going to start implementing those at the beginning of next year as well. So we're on our way to meeting our goals. Awesome. Thank you.
I'm Carrie Cavadah. I'm the mentor for Tracy Elementary School, and these are two of our inclusivity students, and they're going to get started for you.
We are from the Tracy School Inclusivity Panel, and our main research question was how our administration and teachers addressing students' stress at school.
Stress at Tracy School. Our research message, methods were surveys sent out to all students and teachers, then interviews with the stakeholders, and the stakeholders are our principal and our program specialist. And then we also did photo journalism, which is, we went around the school and took some pictures in the classrooms.
Our findings were that 70% of students said that they get stressed at school, and we learned this from the survey. We also learned from the survey that the top reason students got stressed at school was because of difficult schoolwork and not enough time on tests. And the top requested solutions for dealing with stress were being able to talk with someone or being able to talk with a friend, being able to use a stress toy or a fidget toy, and being able to have a break or cool down. Through photojournalism, we learned that all classrooms have a space for a calming area, but not all classrooms have this setup. And through interviews, we learned that school leaderships are very open to learning more and partnering with on this, partnering with us on this issue. And we also learned that most teachers felt that there was not enough time in the school day to check in with students about stress.
These were the recommendations that we got. It should be built into the school day that students have a specific time other than recess and lunch to talk to, and to talk to someone about their school stress. And all of the classrooms should have a area set up for students to calm down or to play with fidgets and stress toys. And then we have the school leadership to communicate their shared value of teachers and staff taking time to check in with students about their stress.
We're actually very lucky because our entire leadership team is actually here right now, so we are working very closely with them.
Such a great job. I have to say, as someone who started with the inclusivity panels at the secondary level, like when that resolution came to be, we jumped right on it, got those inclusivity panels going. And I was actually just talking to the lead mentors today and commenting that when, when I go on the panel meetings, there are children or students on those panels now that were sixth graders when we first started, and it's so amazing to watch the growth. And it's making me very, very proud right now that our fifth graders are speaking as, oh, sorry, fourth and fifth grade are speaking so eloquently and so maturely and, and are really understanding the YPAR process and the importance of your voice in what we do. I think that's something we all should be proud of, is that our student voice component of our district has really, really been elevated, and we're including student voice in everything we do now. And so thank you so much to the teachers and staff who mentor these children, and a big thank you to the children. That's, it's amazing. You're going to be future leaders.
Mr. Dugan?
Yeah, great job, guys. Parents and guardians, you guys, you want to kind of wave there here? So, being, being a parent myself, one of the biggest, the biggest compliment I can get is when someone compliments my child, and I think that's a reflection of what you guys are doing. So the fact that they're showing so much empathy for their classmates and bravery to come before the school committee and articulation, academic discourse, I know we hear about a lot of that in our, our curriculum presentations. So just, I was just blown away by that. So kudos to the parents and guardians. You guys are doing a fabulous job. You know, the feeling of empathy starts at home. It does, and so thank you for that. And our teachers and staff, obviously, you guys are doing great, but I say that to you all the time, so, but I'll say it again, you guys are doing great. Thank you.
Member Castellanos? Member Peña?
First of all, I'm just wild.
I, I think I was wild at the moment. I think Alex said that she interviewed the clinical team. That was amazing. I think that's, takes a lot of courage to come up here and start talking directly to the, to, to the people who make decisions, right? You got the mayor, the school committee, you got family members in the audience. I think we've got to give another round of applause for the students. So, so just for the students, so student voice, that's what it is. So we, as politicians and leaders, we have obligations to activate student voice within the decision-making process. And the action research that you put forward, it makes a difference. It brings, it really illuminates key issues that we, we appreciate it because I think your voice matters and it's important to make sure that you have your voice at the table while we make key decisions. And, and you, you add it to a process that is pretty complex, complex, like research methods and to look at the YPO process and what you guys all have endured is, it's unbelievable. From school safety to cyberbullying and to Tracy Elementary, the fact that you guys are saying that you guys are surveying folks and then meeting with your stakeholders. Are you kidding me? Like, I, I, that's just the vocabulary and then also your willpower and that just, that level of focus is incredible. You should be very, everyone should be very proud of what you all have just put forward. I'm inspired. I'm, I'm always continued to be inspired by our students at Lynn Public Schools and the staff and everyone who, who actually gets us to these moments. It's incredible. Every one of you have the ability to go far. And we should, as politicians and leaders in the room, we need to start taking notes and paying attention to what they brought forward because I think you guys made a lot of, a lot of people in here really proud, especially your families. And I want to thank the families and parents, your support systems that brought you here. And I think you guys done a phenomenal job with your research methods and provided us with very insightful processes. I was part of that resolution, like five years, six years ago. How many years ago was it? Five?
It was twenty twenty, I think.
Twenty twenty? I'm still thawed out, but to see, to see, to see things come to fruition, I just, I, I still say it's just, it's a, it's a dream of mine. And I remember when I was your age, like I could never think as far, I would never come to stuff like this. I wouldn't think to do it. Very shy person when I was a kid and to, to have you all, you know, you're on TV too, so. That's even more, just, and I, we told, yeah, we told you now, I didn't say it before, but you are on TV. But thank you so much. You made, you made my night, so thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for your presentation. Thank you to the parents, the mentors, the leaders, leadership team. Thank you, the principals and the students, man. I was blown away. Wow, like, like, especially when we talk about safety, you know, and, and practicing lockdown drills and, and not being in fear, like wow. You know, this is like, like Member Castellano said, you know, we have to be, you know, let's pay attention, you know, and I am just like emotionally touched too, looking at the student voice, but the representation that's here, you know, and I came from a time when I went to school, like there wasn't too many of us. We didn't have a voice, you know. And just to see the representation, you know, and, you know, having your voices really heard, like and people really paying attention means so much to me. You know, as a parent too, I am touched to see kids, you know, really stepping it up and and I was touched when you talk about having a conversation, you know, and then, and was it, I think it was Druids? That you were, you were just, you wanted to have simple conversations around goals. That's what it takes. When you have a conversation, you're, you're able to open up the lines of communication, you know, let's drop the, you know, you can have a direct line, you know, and and when you start with small goals and just having conversations, the doors open up, you know, and I really was touched with that, you know. Especially like talking about the escalating techniques that, you know, Member Castellano talks about. That's true. Having a place where you can like take a, take a break, you know, having someone to talk to, you know, like they were saying in Tracy and I just want to say big shout out to Kendi, you know, the leadership shows with all the principals, with these students, man. And that, you know, like, like Deb just said, they so, you know, they talked so eloquently. They had a good presentation, man. I'm just like, wow, man, I'm floored, man. Thank you, guys. It takes a lot of courage to be here. Thank you. Give them a round of applause, man.
Member Capola, Member Geely.
You all did a wonderful job. I think with everything you're learning, especially Tracy School and the stress, you know, we've been through a lot the last few years with COVID and many people could have used the suggestions that you made to get through COVID. So, you know, like Lenny says, you have a voice now and you have knowledge. So take that knowledge that you have and share it, share it within your family and share it with other people. If you see other people getting stressed, you know, or being bullied, you'll have a way to share with them. So, you know, you have that skill now, just don't hold it and start to share it with others.
I don't know what I can say. Everything I think has been said. You did an excellent job. Every school. You hit on such wonderful issues that are a concern of all of us in the city of Lynn. From bullying to having a place where you can put in your ideas over there at Druids in that anonymous box to school safety outside, how you're going to behave if you have that lockdown drill when you're outside. Over to, I love the stress releasers. Everybody should have a place to release their stress. And I think Superintendent Rogero said it all. It is so good to hear your voices, to hear what you think are the issues and I commend you on it and I'm so happy you came here. And you are on TV. And I'm going to beat out all my colleagues and say, let's have a standing ovation.
Member Magdalia.
So I'm, I'm going to break with my colleagues and say, I'm not surprised because I know how fantastic Lynn Public School students are and I know that you are a representative group of the strength of our Lynn Public School students. And so while what you did is phenomenal, I know your classmates are also phenomenal. And I want to give you some homework because I am a teacher. This is my homework for you. When you get to middle school, don't stop. When you get to high school, don't stop. Because any version of activism, which is really what you're doing here, you're doing research-based activism, is only as effective as the people who hold those in power accountable. And that is now your job, to hold those of us who are in power accountable for the kinds of changes that matter to you. So thank you for that, but just remember, you are kind of like the tip of the iceberg. All of your classmates are the bulk of that iceberg. And all you have to do is say, this is how we're going to do it. I know, I learned and they will follow you and help you do it. So don't forget your homework.
Well, I think it's fair to say the expansion of the inclusivity panel to the elementary level was a resounding success. Congratulations. Thank you so much to the students, to the staff, to the families. That was an incredible presentation and we are just so impressed and grateful for your hard work and leadership. Thank you. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to, but you don't have to.
This is your one chance.
It's a school night.
One chance. This is the one chance. Share it. You gotta share it. Guys, I have bad allergies right now.
You stole my water, so can you grab one of the waters down there for me? Yeah, there you go. That's it. Thank you.
So we just played domino effect. I just.
That's okay, as long as I can have it.
I think I was like trying to, I don't know if I stole it. I think it was, uh, I was framed.
Obviously didn't get the Girl Scout badge on table settings where you know what's to your right and what's to your left.
Got overwhelmed here.
Yeah. The Boy Scouts have the same badge because we used to do a joint dinner with them and we had to set the tables and everybody had to make sure they did it correctly.
I loved, I loved, actually, I did Boy Scouts. I was a cop. Cop Scouts. Good job. Awesome. My god, I can't open my eyes.
Allergies?
Yeah, it's so bad. I'm like talking with my eyes closed because my allergies are so bad. Can imagine how I'm going to look like. I'm like, I can barely open them.
This is not this.
Two different things.
Very different things.
She's always smiling.
That's tonight? That was tomorrow. Philadelphia's on fi- on fire. They, they, yeah, they're just choking. Too bad. Too bad. Too many cooks in the kitchen. Must be confusing with their game plan. Go out and shoot threes. Horford out here busting three downs every second. He can't, he can't let man away from the arc if he's not there. I think, man, you know what? They're at Boston too, right?
It was.
Their consistency ain't there. He shouldn't be having six, no, his points, like joking. He's just.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is a data presentation on survey results.
Okay, I'd like to start with a little intro if you don't mind. Uh, tonight, we will have two of four curriculum resource rollout present, uh, rollouts present their results of the survey data that was collected this month. Before we begin this presentation, I want our teachers to hear from me that we do hear you. We do acknowledge the incredible challenges that were faced this year with so many new rollouts in one year along with the integration of Power School. You all have worked so hard to learn new platforms, materials, pedagogical shifts and the assessments and performance tasks within all of these rollouts. The interdisciplinary maps, as well as the decision to choose the My View curriculum was a direct response to our current curriculum not meeting our students' needs, especially our Ls and students with disabilities. Every level has been impacted this year in some way and have had to learn, manage and implement some kind of new program, platform or resource. Although all levels needed to handle new rollouts, the elementary level was hit the hardest. This is more than any teacher is used to receiving in one school year. I take full responsibility for all the decisions that were made this year but want to help you understand the two major factors that led to these decisions and as a result, the many rollouts happening all at once. First, historically, Lynn Public Schools has never rolled out multiple curriculum resources at one time. We have always staggered our curriculum rollouts to avoid exactly what we have experienced this year. Unfortunately, however, the two years of the pandemic disrupted this staggered schedule. Due to this disruption in the staggering, it forced us to, uh, to conduct multiple resource review committees simultaneously. It is difficult to roll out one curriculum resource, but to roll out multiple just intensified the process even more. Second, along with the disruption I just described, the Department of Education also was communicating to all districts around the state around assessing our students, acceleration of learning and the implementation of high-quality instructional materials. We immediately began looking at our current resources and identified that our programs, which were once an approved resource, were now not considered highly qual- uh, high-quality instructional materials. Both Reach and Go Math were no longer on the acceptable use list. As a result, we needed to make a difficult decision to move forward in the review committee process in the purchasing and implementation of multiple resources and approaches. This decision was based on the incredible need to help our students make progress on their loss of learning that they have experienced due to the pandemic. Although this year has been, uh, has been so difficult for our teachers, many of our teachers have rallied to learn, collaborate, implement, share, assess and share feedback in an effort to provide what our students need to help our district determine next steps to strengthen this work. At the end of the day, the challenges that we as adults have experienced are worth it if it supports our students moving forward in their learning. I will now turn the presentation over to our MLE and curriculum staff who will be presenting for interdisciplinary maps and the My View curriculum rollout data and action steps. Come on forward.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Um, I'm going to start off. My name is Rania Caldwell, Executive Director of Multilingual Education. I also want to, I know everyone left. They didn't stay for our presentation, but huge shout out to those inclusivity panels and, you know, our, you know, I was going to say future social justice advocates, but they're current social justice advocates, which is amazing. And huge shout out, they have also left, but there were four ELD specialists who were mentors of those inclusivity panel groups, so that was also exciting to see. Okay, so today we're going to discuss, um, as Superintendent Rogero mentioned, the interdisciplinary units and um, the My View rollout. So we want to start today and our presentation in a couple of weeks with illustrative math. Oh, pause, rewind. I'm joined by these fabulous people here. I have Kristin Tobacco, Assistant Director of Social Studies, Leah Stelges, Assistant Director of Science, Jackie Gallo, Assistant Director of Really Childhood, and Michelle Winslow, Assistant Director of ELA. Um, normally Amanda Campbell would be here. Um, she works very much so with this team on the interdisciplinary units. She is traveling home to visit her mom for Mother's Day, so I told her she better not be listening. Um, and she should be enjoying that time with her family. So now we want to start off today's presentation with this graphic that's used by DESI and TNTP, the New Teacher Project, which is a group that DESI partners with to discuss kind of, to discuss organizational change. And you'll see here in this graphic that with any major organizational change, there are peaks and valleys of successes and challenges that we see with any type of major implementation. You'll see on the X and the Y axis that those peaks and valleys that occur from the initiation phase at the beginning to the institutionalization phase at the end, um, you know, really are driven by two things, organizational commitment and time. Because we know with those two things, that implementation with supports can drive to that ultimate goal of success. So in our presentation tonight and our following presentation, we do want to highlight that in analyzing the trends of the, of the survey that was released in March, that there were some consistent trends across the data. And the major trend is that we saw similar things across all rollouts. Right? Which reinforces those peaks and valleys that we see in the implementation graphic in the previous slide. These trends included the challenge of implementing new curricula, the shipment and delivery, distribution, accessing and navigating resources, right? That is all hard to do when you're not familiar with something, as well as varied accessibility for our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And overall, the data shared with us, some successes that we see with all the rollouts, some challenges, and then some clear focus areas for next steps. So now we're just gonna jump into the interdisciplinary units in KDA 2, which was the focus of the survey that was, um, given to teachers in March. So we'll briefly discuss the background of the units, the timeline of the units, some current feedback structures that exist, as well as dive into the March survey data with next steps. So for, for those of you that are not familiar, some background into the units before we dive into the data. The interdisciplinary units are unique because they strategically connect content, language, and social justice standards, including Massachusetts Frameworks of English Language Arts, the WIDA Standards in English Language Development, Social Studies, Science, Technology, and Engineering, Social Emotional Learning and Approaches to Play in Learning, and the Social Justice Standards from Learning for Justice. This allows students to make natural, uh, natural connections in authentic ways while they're building systematic content knowledge and language. This is particularly valuable and research-based for our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. One thing that we constantly hear from educators is that there's not enough time to do everything that we have to do. And this integrated approach makes everything connected so that everything is working in tandem versus pulling away from the, the goals. This allows our KDA 2 students, our KDA 2 English learners to double their time in English language development. Our English learners now represent 69% of our KDA 2 demographic. This also created time for students to consistently engage in integrated social studies and science instruction at the elementary level. Our units began in dual language in 2021 and are expanding up each year in dual language, and they moved into the SEI setting the following years. So just quickly, we want to discuss a feedback loop that has been part of the interdisciplinary unit since the rollout in 2021 with dual language, including professional learning for building leaders and educators, PD surveys, educator surveys by grade and unit to really give us usable feedback to adjust the units based on teacher voice, monthly PLC meetings to support educators, and revision teams to review feedback and make necessary adjustments each year. We have really seen the enormous power of teacher voice in this feedback loop, which has consistently helped to evolve the maps to better meet the needs of our students and support our educators. So here are just some highlights of the feedback structures in place that consistently embed teacher voice as they implement the units, right? Because we don't want to wait till the end of the year when everyone's like, what was I thinking? Right? So each unit, we're making sure that we're surveying educators, hearing that voice in the moment, like, oh, I wish we had this. I wish this connected here, while also offering opportunities in the middle of the year and the end of the year to hear that feedback from a more holistic perspective. Alright, so now we'll dive into the survey data that was, um, that we looked at from the March 2023 survey. This survey was given across all rollouts. And the data that you'll see here does not represent the data structures that were previously mentioned. We focused exclusively on the survey data that was consistent across the board. So we're not gonna dive into every data question. We just wanted to give an overview of some general trends. So there were a couple of questions that asked educators if the assessments help monitor progress and/or identify misconceptions using assessments. And as you can see, and you'll see this across the survey results, is that you see those peaks and valleys in that implementation graphic, that about half feel like they can use that data to inform their practice, and about half are still working to what that looks like in their classrooms with their students. And that's where those support structures really come into play, into making sure we increase that number so that teachers feel more comfortable with that time on that graphic. Another question focused on if the data from assessments help to move my instruction forward. And you'll see in this graphic that 66% of educators indicated a neutral, agree, or strongly agree response, with the largest percentage of indicators saying agree with 29% outside of the neutral category, which is 32%. So a lot of times on surveys, if there's a middle point, a lot of people kind of lean towards the middle if they're not sure. But we saw more on the agree and strongly agree than we did on the disagree and strongly disagree. This data is promising as teachers engage students in developmentally appropriate assessment tasks that have meaningful, real-world application of grade-level standards. I'm going to pass it over to Jackie, who's gonna dive a little bit deeper into those performance assessment tasks, so you can see our kids in action. I'll take care of the clicker for you.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, Rania. So because performance tasks are a shift from the way we've assessed students traditionally, we thought it would be a helpful, um, you know, it would be helpful to share what a performance task looks like in the early grades. So here, oh, can you click it? You have the clicker.
Got it.
Oh, sorry. So here, um, we have the performance assessment task in action. The performance assessment tasks are engaging hands-on ways to evaluate student mastery of standards in a way that is developmentally appropriate with real-world applications. Each performance assessment task in the units have a rubric with criteria based on the prioritized standards in yield of product and performance, or performance, that is used in evidence of learning. This, uh, the performance tasks provide opportunities to measure multiple content areas, as Rania was speaking to you before, and, um, if you take a look at this particular picture, it is, um, of grade 2 students in Ms. Rincon's class, and they're designing a solution to slow or prevent water from changing the shape of the land. This is just one example, and we have a few more in the next few slides.
I just have to share this example because it shows how our city and what our students see can be represented within the unit so naturally in that in this unit, the wall at Red Rock there, where Mission on the Bay was, maybe that's not Red Rock, is in the units as an example of erosion. And now, unfortunately, you know, we, they can really see that in action in their own communities, even when they're watching the news or on social media, which is really exciting.
So here is another example of a performance assessment task. Students in Ms. Boudreaux's class at Aborn presenting about designing a device that communicates using sound or light. And this is the actual performance task underneath that we just kind of clipped right out of the map. We can go to the next one. And here is another example. This, this is an example of students from Mrs. Harrington's first-grade classroom at Harrington sharing the Unit 5 performance task. In the first, uh, the first couple pictures or videos that we were hoping that we could share. They're very, very quick.
Go ahead.
Awesome. What else? What characteristic traits did he have? Awesome. Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Why did you pick them? What about her character traits? What made her a good leader? So she was smart and she was helpful? Awesome. Love it. Good job. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And then we just have one more example on the next slide. And this is of a second-grade classroom at The Connery, and they completed a research project comparing a country of their choice to the United States. And then after researching a country, the students created PowerPoint presentations. So there's just a little clip of one of the slides from the students' work and then some pictures of the students in front of their PowerPoint presentations. And then for some next steps for assessment, structure for teachers to progress monitor student learning throughout the units across the content area within the units. We have formative assessments built into the interdisciplinary units. However, we want to focus more on that support for teachers on how, um, how we can use them effectively. And then the focus, we also have been looking at a data platform to help house performance, um, the, the performance assessment tasks because it's more of a portfolio type of, um, you know, way to, to house things. So we, we don't currently have something that would help us with that system, but we're looking to, to adopt something. And then this chart shows a little more than 50% of teachers reported that the materials support the teaching of grade-level standards. Some of the written feedback, uh, we wanted to investigate a little bit more, are that we did read a few comments about the materials not being age-appropriate or developmentally appropriate or on grade level. So it's definitely something we want to investigate a little deeper to see what, like, exactly those examples that they're referring to. And then the next steps for standard alignment. Vertical articulation of language arts standards in the dual-language and SEI programs. Mrs. Winslow and her reading coaches have been doing a tremendous amount of work on the Grade 1 and Grade 2 maps in regards to standard alignment. And they plan to continue this work. We also have a school and district-level teams working on revisions through, we will throughout the summer based on grade and unit-specific year-long educator feedback. And then another focus area for next steps for standard alignment is the enhancement of application of social studies and science, technology, and engineering standards within the interdisciplinary units. So we hope to provide more opportunities for educators to engage with these new standards in materials. And the revision team will evaluate materials and learning experiences to ensure students have developmentally appropriate access to these standards. And then the next question was, do you have all the resources for each unit of study? We know that this has been a serious issue for the past couple of years, and teachers had to navigate this new approach with limited appropriate resources. We know putting a read aloud on a smartboard is not equivalent to a teacher reading to their class. But of course, our teachers made it work for their students and found creative ways around this obstacle. But we know that they should not have had to. So for our next steps for materials, having a process for communication and inventorying materials to ensure readily accessible materials. The material shipment and distribution was the, of the major setback of the initial rollout of the interdisciplinary units. It, it, we, we could see that 70% of the student feedback focused on materials arriving too close or after the beginning of the unit. And in light, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. This, for next year, most of the resources will be there because of the struggle this year. So we are looking forward to next year being able to focus on just more support around implementation rather than, you know, trying to search for the resources and getting things in on time. And our overall next steps, the data we were asked to present tonight is a snapshot of what we're actually receiving from teachers. And we know in order to make the best decisions on next steps, we need to use multiple sources and dig a little deeper in some areas. So our overall next steps do take other data into consideration. We plan to prioritize professional learning based on year-long, grade-specific teacher feedback along the WIDA 2020 framework, application of metalinguistic awareness. We do have, like, we do have cognates and other language supports built into the maps, but we want to make sure that we're providing the right supports for the application. Also infusion of everyday writing tasks. Formative assessment is another focus using all four language domains and the enhancement of application for social studies in science, technology, and engineering standards within the interdisciplinary units. We can pause for questioning? Before moving on to ELA 3 to 5, right? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, makes sense. So any questions?
Remember to again, remember, Magnoia.
I, I actually appreciate everybody's candid comments. Superintendent Regiro, you know, I don't think you should take all the blame, though. This is a team, you know? And we're all part of it, and, you know, we approved all the curriculum, and, and so we're all a part of it. So my, my concern is that we're just learning from our mistakes. Mistakes are made, you know, and I don't think it's a, it's, um, you know, surprising anybody by saying that. You know, we have heard from teachers quite a bit about those mistakes. But it sounds like, Jackie, from your comments too, um, you know, I especially like that you, you mentioned that, you know, you're gonna look at, you know, the appropriate level of texts and all, and all those things that I've been hearing from teachers. So I, I do appreciate that. So thank you for all that. But like I said, we're a team, and I think we all need to take ownership on this and how this is all rolled out and, and, um, you know, the, the undue stress we put on our, on our educators. And therefore our students as well. So, um, you know, that's what I would say about that, and, and I think it's really important we learn from those mistakes that we've made. You know, us included, the, the school committee included in that. The positives I got, because we got the raw data, so I do appreciate all that. The positives I got, so it appears benchmark assessments are available, planning materials and, and things like that are available. You did address a lot of the negatives that I saw in, in our slides, but 50%, you know, of the teachers feeling that they've got the things they need, that's not enough, you know? We know that. That's not enough. So we gotta do better. Um, we all know that, um, and, and I'm confident we're going to. I think the most important thing, Jackie, again, not to put you on the spot, you did mention the SMARTboards and the books on SMARTboards. It's so important that our emergent readers hear teachers read, and our teachers are able to model what good reading sounds like, so those kids can hear it in their heads when they're reading on their own. So that's such an important piece. So I'm glad to hear that that's something we're going to work on and do better by. So I appreciate all the candidness. I do. And we all know that we have things to work on, so I'm looking forward to hearing all the updates and getting the work done. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Magnolia.
So I just, I want to understand a process here. So if I misunderstood what you were saying, please, please correct me. So the earliest part of the presentation was on the assessments built into the curriculum, right? So you showed us these formative assessments that the students were going through, okay, et cetera. But because you were merging that with data, I was a little bit confused as to whether or not you were also referencing the survey data as your assessment of curriculum efficacy. So you used assessments in so many different contexts, I was unclear if you were kind of merging those two points. So can you please explain if you do indeed have an assessment process for curriculum efficacy that is part of what you're presenting here with the survey data? Or if I was just blending the assessment that is inherent in the curriculum with your departmental assessment, maybe you would call it a self-assessment?
Thank you for that question. I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
I think my point to kind of highlight what the performance task is, is because it's such a different way of assessing our students. I just wanted to make sure that everyone at home and that are here tonight, like, just had a good idea of what that looks like. It's not a bubble sheet, you know, filling in, you know, questions like that. So it's more of a, you know, students performing what they're able to do and showing their learning. So I just wanted to highlight that, because I didn't want that to be confusing. And those are the assessments that are in the maps. The rest of the presentation was on a survey that went out to teachers, you know, questioning about what they were, how they felt about certain elements of the rollout. A lot of the questions were about the assessments. So that's where, like, a formative assessment came into the conversation, which we have separately from the performance tasks.
So I guess then the follow-up question is, do you have a departmental assessment mechanism for taking that data and regurgitating it into substantial changes? Whether that's changes in how you roll out, changes in how you provide professional development, right? I mean, we know that without these schema, we don't have anything to do with the data. So can you talk about that?
Yes. So more about, like, our next steps or how we're collecting all of our data?
Well, it's, it's one thing if you give a survey and you're like, oh, look, 50% of the people didn't like it. Here's what the DESI says about how 50% of the people don't like it. But if you don't have a process in place, like, say, a curricular rollout rubric for the department, the curriculum department, then that data doesn't, it doesn't fall into anything that's actionable, right? It's like you lack the departmental assessment in order to figure out where change is needed. So what I'm trying to understand is what happens to the survey data? Is it, again, I'm going to use the word schema, is there a schema into which it fits? Because you've done this with other curricular rollouts, and when you do a survey, then the actionable items always proceed as follows? Or is this just, okay, this is interesting data, and now we're going to do X or Y? I want to find out if there's, you know, something, a system in place for when you receive feedback from educators, that it's not falling into the void?
Can I, I'm going to, Mrs. Powers, can you talk a little bit about the conversations we've been having around the fact, to Dr. Magnolia's point?
I'll let you go.
Oh, okay. So one of the things that absolutely came to light with this rollout is that there is no mechanism.
Okay.
Right? And so this survey was a step in that direction. And what we've been talking about as a leadership team is the need to implement a mechanism that every rollout has, you know, a survey, feedback, a rubric on the success of a rollout, so that we don't have that happen going forward.
We have to institutionalize that process in every single rollout. And Jackie, I, I understa, what Jackie is, wants to highlight, and I know what you want to highlight, is that throughout the process, they surveyed teachers on each unit. But what, what we're addressing here is that for our curriculum rollouts, we have not had a process that assessed each rollout in a same or similar way.
Exactly, yeah.
Which we do need to put in place, and this was our first attempt at it, but we need to do better at that.
Well, because you've got all this survey data now, so what do you do with it, right? Like, so if your next, your next rollout, you haven't improved, it's still 50% in March, which to my mind, 50% in October is very different than 50% in March. You know, because if teachers aren't buying into this curriculum, then their enthusiasm for coming to work, their excitement with working with their students, you know, we need that. And so I want, I really do want to see that process, but I also would love to see it mapped out in time. So whether it's the quarter-mesters or the trimesters or, you know, anything like that, so that it can be actioned when it is received. Not that there's anything wrong with doing things in the summertime, but if you're doing multiple surveys, there should be able to be a dynamic process in place by which, oh my gosh, we need to, on the fly, get some PD specifically about X.
Yes.
Member Magnolia, if I may.
Yes.
One of the things that we talked about in the, with the curriculum team is really and all working together going forward, looking at these results, is to your point and your question about teacher efficacy around how that does have to happen, right? Simultaneously, as we're doing these, our own internal program evaluations, to make sure that the data that we're collecting on student achievement also correlates to what we are getting feedback on from, you know, that qualitative data from the teachers. And so that process, you know, going forward will look very different as we collect data in the coming years. And that also has to be reflected in our upcoming strategic plan.
Yeah.
On how we build, right? And frame out the years within the plan and what those metrics need to be for achievement for each of the years.
And I would just like to add one last thing, which is pedagogical modeling, right? When a teacher sees that an assessment means that students have not grasped a concept, they don't just plow on, right? They have to stop and do something different. And I really would like this process, as it's being developed, to take the pedagogical model as its core, because if there's not a mechanism in place to be able to stop the bus to make sure that everyone's buckled up, then it's, it's not going to be successful, right? Because it's, it's, it's not using those best practices. Thank you for letting me pontificate a little bit. I just feel very strongly about this.
Remember, guys, yes.
Just to get some clarification, Superintendent Rosario, you said, so would the mechanisms that you were referring to, would progress monitoring in the moment, like, in the moment feedback opportunities, is that something that you, we didn't have that before?
So we? We didn't have a systematic system or procedure approach, thank you, when we would roll out, you know, a new curriculum of progress monitoring it throughout the year, right? The initial rollout, how's it going? Middle of the year, where are we now? Okay, let's make some shifts. End of the year, how did it go? Let's get some feedback now. Over the summer, let's make the corrections for the next school year, so that we're strengthening and refining the use of those curriculum resources going forward, right? So we didn't have, we had a system for choosing curriculum with rubrics, with committees, with, you know, feedback, right? Piling, using the materials, you know, collaborating, like, we have a full system of how we choose materials. But then there was never anything about how are we progress monitoring that? And I just want to say this publicly. It's one of the things that, you know, when Dr. Alvarez started, our first meeting together was in February. She started physically here March 1st. One of the things that we, as a leadership team, have really come to appreciate is her real data-minded perspective and her innovative thinking and visionary thinking that she is bringing forward, from coming from a different state, a different experience, a much larger district. She's putting into perspective things that we, in our long career together, really have never experienced. And it's actually very, very exciting for us, because I'm actually learning from her. And so that's, that's an exciting thing for me at this point in my career. And so, you know, there are things that we need to put in place.
Thank you.
Progress monitoring is a big one. I want to emphasize a point brought to light, that this data is not about teacher efficacy or student achievement. This data is about the components of, of the resources and evaluating that. Okay? You know, do, are the assessments, you know, are teachers able to use the assessments? Are, are the resources aligned to the standards? Those types, that's what the focus of that assessment is.
Sorry, if I could just add, and I really appreciate us working across a lot of curriculum teams, the systemization of those types of processes not only creates data, right? But it creates consistency, right? Where one team is in saying, we want to do it this way, and then communication is going out one way, and then another team is doing it a different way, and communication is going out a different way. It causes a lot of disconnection. And I think systemizing a process that every curriculum team owns allows, it's one less thing for that, right? It's another process that team is creating when you can do it as a system, which would alleviate a lot of communication flow across the district.
Ms. Magnolia.
Okay. My question is on the assessments. I was assuming that across the board, like, every school had the same, you know, had the same training on what assessments to use for the process. But yet, when you look at them, you know, they're all very different. You might get a school that everybody's using similar things, but then you'll go to another school and they're using totally different things. You know, I mean, the very first one says informal assessments, you know? But then you have some that are end-of-union assessments, some are weekly rubrics. So there, it's not consistent. So if they all had the same professional development training on this, how did it go amok, you know, in different directions when they got back to the classrooms or the school?
Well, there's, there was one thing I did notice from the survey results, that it wasn't just classroom teachers taking the survey. So it went out to everyone, and I think it was just K to 2, and some people were answering that do not even use interdisciplinary units. So that it, there was a few, a few of those that I caught that had actually said, I wasn't trained in it and I don't use them because I'm, you know, a different, a specialist, you know? So, so some of that information is a little bit wonky, I guess, I could say.
Yeah. And I think I'll also add, just in teacher practice, right? You're using multiple assessments, right? So when teachers read that question, some might list all the different ways that they might be assessing students within, like, a unit of instruction. But like, the, not summative, but the performance assessment task is one of those, but teachers are always doing formative assessments. They're always doing, like, they're always doing different things to assess. But the performance assessment tasks, which are embedded in the units, was the overwhelming response in that narrative data. So I think people just listed the very different ways that they're assessing progress throughout the unit.
And as far as the resources not being available, I mean, was it a problem with the company not having the material to provide it? You know, us not ordering it in time? You know, I can't really remember what, but there was one particular materials that, you know, I really want, the teachers really wanted to see it at the start of September. I think they, the previous year, they didn't have it. They really wanted it. And I try to personally follow it, like, someone, you know, put it together, then it gets passed to, you know, blank, blank, and blank person, then the business manager for approval or whatever happens. Then it goes across the street to City Hall. And, you know, me following it, I kept calling City Hall, you know, because we were, you know, we were told here, yes, all the materials will be here September 1st for those teachers. The teachers kept saying, I don't believe it, I don't believe it. And they were right. It didn't happen. And I spent my summer trying to follow the trail of the paper, you know, and it never got to the city side. So, you know, that can be a continuing problem if, if that doesn't get corrected, you know? And teachers will lose faith in us, that you're just not going to have the stuff there. And we should have the stuff there. There's no reason not to. And, you know, I know some of the things that are 50%, but 50%, you know, we don't want, I don't want to accept 50% on those.
Yeah, we don't. Agreed. Yeah, I agree. I don't know if Leah, you wouldn't even want to talk about, you know, we've talked about science materials and?
Yeah, I'm happy to. The, every year, you know, K through 5, in the spring, I place orders for classroom materials kits for the fall. And, you know, typically pre-pandemic, they'd arrive kind of around that time for the fall. But I mean, the pandemic has really exacerbated some of those shipping delays. So orders are still being placed in the spring for the upcoming year. And this past year, we, we had a lot of delays, materials kind of arriving, some, you know, the kits, some in two boxes, and one box would arrive, but not the other one. And the next one would come months later. So that was certainly exacerbating some of what was going on.
And, you know, the other thing is, there's no reason we don't have the money, because last year, we did not meet our net school spending, you know? And so the money was there. And if you have to start ordering earlier than that, you know, that's something people are going to have to really look at. You can't wait to the last minutes, like writing grants. I know we're notorious for waiting for the, you know, the last moment to submit our grants. And, you know, hopefully that won't happen as we go along here. But we, you know, putting it in early enough, you know, if this is what you're going to have as the, and you need the materials, then don't wait. Because I don't like seeing that we haven't reached the 100% net school spending.
I would agree. And I think one slight hiccup for fall materials is that we're leveraging the new fiscal year. So we have to wait till that new fiscal year rolls over. So sometimes access to even those funds to spend aren't available till mid, sometimes like talking the third week of July. So that also is just in terms of the fiscal year structures that sometimes is challenging for ordering for the fall.
There's usually a period even where, like Munis, you can't access.
Can't access it, yeah.
Putting in, you know, to the system, because to defend the finance office, like, they're trying to close their books, right? And so it's, it's the systematic procedures that kind of get in the way sometimes.
But if there's money that we know we're not spending on budget lines, they're not being spent, we know that ahead of time. We know maybe in January, February, we weren't going to use a certain amount of money for something that we were doing. It's available.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, you know?
Yeah, and just to clarify on the net school spending, that's a difference between the budgeted and actual. So we're at the 100% budgeted, and then the, when the actual comes back short, based on shortfall, typically that's a result of non-supply issues. So it's not that the money's not being spent on supplies. It's more, has a lot more to do with other items that fluctuate. It's more, has a lot more to do with other items that, that fluctuate. And obviously, as we've talked about in this committee, we, we have met those requirements by the, the system that we've, that we've set up. Certainly the case that we have the funds for supplies. And I think we all acknowledge the frustration around these, these delays.
I just also, Mr. McHugh is on Zoom. He sent me a text, we spent all of our budget last year. He wanted, he wanted.
For the record. Mary Banier.
Yeah, those are concerns that I had too. People kept reaching out to me about not having enough resources and shipment delays and things. And moving forward, I'm glad that we're going to put a mechanism in place because, you know, we can keep grabbing all this data all we want, but let's move forward and let's address these issues, try to get at them early, you know?
Okay, we transition to, we'll transition to MyView. To Michelle.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jackie. Yes, I'm sorry for my slightly awkward positioning at the table. That would be wonderful. No, no, it's fine. We're fine. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Michelle Winslow and I am the Assistant Director for ELA and Reading at the elementary level. I'm here tonight to share with all of you the results of the survey conducted on behalf of the MyView implementation in grades three through five. Included will be responses to the data and relevant next steps to support year two of the implementation. Prior to the adoption of MyView literacy, myself and a team of colleagues took part in DESI's Evaluating and Selecting Network via the work behind the GLEAM grant. The process stemmed from DESI's determination to support schools and districts in adopting high-quality curriculum materials for Tier 1 ELA instruction. As mentioned previously by Ms. Rogiro, our current core at the time, Reach for Reading, was deemed not meeting standards alignment. The model supports districts vetting and adopting these materials. From there, the GLEAM leadership team was formed, which was comprised of 44 stakeholders from across the district to support the evaluation process. The team collectively established a set of priorities and parameters in terms of the necessary components required in a curriculum that speaks to our local context. It was quite an extensive list to ensure we landed as best we could on the curriculum to meet our needs. In the summer of 2022, an initial rollout of MyView was conducted titled Program Activation. This was unsuccessful and resulted in, understandably so, an immense amount of frustration among educators across the grade level bands. In order to regroup, a plan was established to provide training to the schools to build capacity within our buildings. Building-based CITs were brought down for professional development that they were then able to bring back to their schools. Next, a series of cycles for professional development that teachers both need and deserve was created. Here, each session was composed of a full day of in-person training with a MyView consultant. And I'm currently working with MyView to map out a full year of ongoing professional development to ensure that all stakeholders receive customized training to meet the needs of their students. The evaluating, so in terms of thinking about the evaluating and selecting process, also referred to as the Implement Mass Process, has four critical phases. As we move into year two of implementation, we will work to continue the targeted training for all teachers, including grade level, special education teachers, teachers in substantially sub-separate classrooms who utilize the resources, reading interventionists as well. Professional development for building principles and occurred in tandem with this year's training cycles, and it is my intent to support program specialists by providing them with the matched So in terms of monitoring, feedback is elicited after every training. This practice will continue moving forward. Monthly meetings with members of the GLEAM leadership team, which is comprised of teachers and administrators, provides an opportunity for us to come together collectively to look at and, and, and share in the critical teachings that the team garners from the continued work with DESI and the Hill for Literacy. This information is then disseminated and will be conveyed out to the entire district. As part of the grant, site visits with the Hill for Literacy and the district literacy coaches have been conducted at the GLEAM schools to support implementation. As we move forward into year two, this will expand to all other schools. PLCs at the GLEAM schools have been supported by the Hill for Literacy and coaches have also served to support both success and to also garner needs and/or additional support moving forward. In collaboration with a team of MyView consultants, professional development will be developed and driven by the voices of teachers in grades three through five. Following a training that will be occurring here on May 31st with grade three teachers, a survey will go out to elicit which aspects of the curriculum they would like a deeper dive into. The result will be a 10-hour, and I apologize, it should say virtual synchronous course for this upcoming, and so teachers will have access to multiple cycles of this course. And again, it will be developed based on their feedback of what their highest need is in really, you know, having a true understanding of the platform and the resources. For this upcoming summer, professional development for onboarding teachers that are new to the district or to the grade level will be provided. And as previously stated, a year of ongoing professional development is being established with the support of MyView literacy. So looking at the survey, 142 educators from 14 elementary schools took part in the March survey. This survey reflects the integral and critical components regarding assessment. Data from all available methods and modalities of assessment help to support planning, instruction, and intervention practices within a multi-tiered system of support. Work moving forward needs to support all stakeholders in the use of and analysis of assessments and making sound decisions for informing instruction, but most importantly, promoting student growth. What assessments are used to measure student learning? The MyView assessment suite is comprised of the following assessment options. Daily formative, weekly formative, and summative. Are there benchmark or unit assessments available? The availabilities of these differing assessments is reflected in the responses from the survey Are these benchmark or unit assessments effective in monitoring and informing student progress? In terms of response to this question, educators are mixed. In response to the feedback, a team of educators are now currently working on diving deeper into all of the district's assessment platforms, including the MyView suite of assessments. This work will be the catalyst for unifying the district in understanding the integral components of each tool and how they can most effectively be utilized for making adjustments to practices and analysis of student growth. This work will also support much-needed work within the district around data-driven decision-making for a multi-tiered system of support. So the literacy assessment survey. This work is in support of the GLEAM grant and has resulted from monthly literacy leader network meetings that our team has attended over the last two years. Here, the most current research is conveyed to support districts in the implementation of curricula that supports, again, all tiers of instruction. We know effective tier-one whole group and differentiated small group instruction within a multi-tiered system of support should be driven by all data points to ensure that students are receiving the instruction that they need and deserve. As stated, a team of LPS educators, along with support from the Hill from Literacy, are in the beginning stages of analyzing all of our platforms through the lens of the following criteria. What is the purpose of the tool? We want to draw out, is it for screening purposes? Is it summative in nature? And does it support progress monitoring? Or is it serving as a diagnostic? What domain of literacy is it measuring? Which of the five components ranging from phonemic awareness, phonics, to vocabulary and comprehension and writing? And is the platform or the tool documenting sources of evidence for reliability and validity? The work will come in stakeholders and team members, arriving in a framework to decide which tools have the integrity in supporting the district in making real-time, effective, and most importantly, reliable decisions in planning and instruction to promote student Do the benchmark or unit assessments help identify misconceptions and gaps in knowledge? Here, LPS educators are again split in their responses. We need to first start with formative assessment to ensure that success for our students is prevalent on both unit assessments and summative. So our work moving forward will lean heavily on assessment, but with a keen lens on the power of formative assessments that are part of the MyView suite. Educators have access to both daily formative assessment tools as well as weekly ones. I quote from Pamela Mason, a Harvard professor and a MyView curriculum development consultant, "Formative assessments are assessments for learning rather than of learning because they impact the teaching and learning interactions. To improve literacy learning, teachers should observe children's responses during instruction for the following. For competencies and confusions, how are we identifying those misconceptions and those gaps before it's too late? For strengths and weaknesses, for the processes and strategies used, and for evidence of what a child already understands so we can move forward in instruction." Next, is the data from the unit or benchmark assessments help to inform my instruction moving forward? As you can see by the table, the chart rather, not my, charts are not my strongest butt. A myriad of responses is evident. Training on the assessment platform will commence the professional development kickoff in the fall. This will be critical in supporting schools to make data-driven decisions that demonstrate the need for adjustments to practice, no matter what tier of instruction teachers are planning for. Summit of assessments are also part of the MyView assessment suite, and as you can see, there are varying modalities for assessing student performance and growth. Included in the summit of assessment suite are benchmark assessments, unit tests, which target the standards taught in each unit, as well as project-based inquiry, which is at the end of every unit. Here, students use their understanding of unit standards to reach, research, and present their findings in a variety of ways. How do we support our schools in streamlining the use of our tier-one curricula? How do we unify practices, facilitate curriculum cohesion across the district? This can be brought to fruition through the creation of a curriculum map with correlating assessments in grades three through five. Work has begun for the district curriculum mapping and assessment team. The work will adhere to the tenants of a backwards design model. This work will support establishing district expectations around assessment, including formative, end-of-unit, and benchmark. Educators and building leaders from across the district will be able to collaborate to ensure that student experiences are comparable across classrooms, horizontally aligned and coherent across grades vertically aligned. Assessments will be aligned with the learning outcomes, both content and language, of the unit to support data-driven decision-making across all levels of practice within a multi-tiered system of support. So the work, support for decision-making. As a result of the literacy leader's work, with the analysis of our assessment platforms in conjunction with the work being conducted by the district curriculum mapping and assessment team, a framework will be put into place by ensuring that all teachers and administrators know which assessments are used with whom and for what purpose. The framework will support an understanding of what the data tells us and what it doesn't. Leading educators to determine when they need to drill deeper with additional assessments to get to the most granular level to ensure that instruction matches the needs of the students that sit before them. Decision trees will serve as roadmaps when determining where to go next to make the most informed decisions for planning and instructional delivery that is, again, impactful for our students in promoting literacy growth. Does the material on the platform support the teaching of the grade level standards? If no, why? In looking at the data, many of the participants responded to the following components. They were looking at criteria in terms of MyView supporting the instruction of grade level standards, concerns regarding the complexity of the tasks and/or texts, and too many skills in whole group, and also not enough time to go deep with the standards. Although the frameworks have been in place for many years, the district needs to reinvigorate and provide professional development regarding not only the major shifts or big ideas within the frameworks, but also around the importance of students having and being provided daily access to grade-level complex text in tandem with the appropriate scaffolds and supports across all tiers of instruction to be successful within that grade level. This work was highlighted with DESI and the Evaluating and Selecting Network, which advocates for the need for high-quality instructional materials that provide standards-aligned instruction utilizing complex and rigorous texts. In the fall of this year, a team of educators and I attended the GLEAM convening, where we were joined by other GLEAM districts. The work of the day was launched by a member of the Council of Great City Schools, which spoke to effective and equitable literacy within an MTSS. How will we support the district in mov, my apologies, in moving towards an MTSS in which equitable and effective teaching and learning, which is driven by data and provides daily opportunities for students to engage with quality, grade-level materials while being provided appropriate scaffolds and supports? We are currently establishing tier-one lab classrooms in multiple schools. Here, we will utilize the continuum of standards-based teaching and learning, along with evidence-based instruction via the gradual release of responsibility, in which we will model the importance and of tier-one instruction and utilizing complex texts, and how we can support students and all students having access to these resources across the tiers. Professional development around MTSS demonstrating that in order to effectively facilitate tier-one whole group and tier-one differentiated small group, there needs to be curriculum materials that have been developed to support deep application for our students. We'll elicit student feedback regarding the units within their grade level band to support the mapping work, to ensure that the standards are taught to mastery and in the progression needed to be prepared for the next grade level. Teacher feedback will also highlight the need to possibly adjust some of the selections within the units of study so that only the most powerful texts are being utilized to mentor the teaching of the component of a standard. This work will also allow us to extend units to provide teachers with that opportunity to go deeper with the standards. Do you have all the resources connected to each unit of study and what is missing? In response to this, a survey of curriculum needs actually was sent out in September of '22 and again on October 20th. A document was linked directly to Savvas in support for immediate response and shipment. Next steps, end-of-year inventory being prepared to go out to ensure all curricular needs are met prior to the start of the year. Missing books, missing resources is unacceptable, regardless of whether it's two or three, they need to have everything at their hands. Which of the following statements are true regarding the core and its use in planning of instruction and assessment? Again, somewhat of a myriad of responses. Educators have varying opinions on the use of these aspects within MyView. Response and next steps in supporting the district with the above components will lie in the following work. Both assessment and instruction will be streamlined through the mapping process. Moving into next year, as I spoke to previously, tier-one lab classrooms, which will support standards-based teaching and learning, which will be continually shared to all stakeholders in the district. I've actually been convinced that I will be doing some modeling, that I will allow them to videotape the practices from planning to implementation to full delivery across the tiers so that we can get that out to everybody. Customized professional development will be created via a teacher's survey from Savvas. It will be, again, the 10-hour virtual course, which will be generated based on teachers' top 10 components of the program that they would like a deeper dive into. Through these endeavors, it is the goal to establish and stabilize instructional methodologies and unify use of curricular resources, while providing a continuum of assessments that support teaching and learning in grades three through five, which will infuse curricular cohesion across the district. Overall, next steps, continue to work with MyView consultants to provide professional development for all stakeholders. Continue work regarding assessment with GLEAM literacy leaders, as well as the district curriculum assessment, I'm sorry, mapping and assessment team. Complete professional development plan, which will outline work to be conducted throughout next year. Ensure that all resources are accounted for and accessible through an inventory analysis. Establish mapping documents that streamline instruction are accompanied with correlating assessment expectations, again, to promote curricular cohesion. And prepare professional development to support a multi-tiered system of support that is driven by data. I want to assure you and all teachers that the analysis and utilization of this survey feedback will not end with this presentation, but will serve as a tool of reference for the work moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to go back to the slide slash page that's do the benchmark or unit assessments help identify. Help Identify Misconceptions and Gaps in Knowledge?" Okay, so I heard you talk about sort of two things simultaneously, right? The teaching using these materials and the professional development around that, and then the assessment of student learning, which we know are two different things, right? I can read this graph one of two ways. I can read it in the way that the teachers who are putting these assessments out think that they are not grade assessments, right? That's one of reading this. I could also read this in that the teachers don't know what to do with the assessments. And so because you talked about the professional development really being for people who are either changing grade levels or folks that are coming in, I forget how it, how you worded it because I needed to keep this one in my brain, but there were two different categories of folks that were getting the sort of new professional development. I wonder if using this graph, if you don't need to ask teachers, do they feel like they understand how to use the assessments in order to make sure that they can understand where the gaps in knowledge are or the misconceptions? Because I think oftentimes the professional development that's focused on the teaching of it misses how to use authentic assessment, right? And so I want to make sure that this specifically is focused on teachers who need to work with assessment methods and how assessment methods then reflect back into their teaching because that's a very different kind of professional development than just this is how you use it, this is how you access the materials, et cetera. So, could you talk about that a little?
I absolutely can. I'll reference back to the work that the literacy leaders are doing in evaluating all assessment tools, including the MyView suite, and how they're identifying, how do they support identifying potential misconceptions, gaps, and learning? And we have not had professional development around the assessment platform yet. As I spoke to earlier, that is going to what commences our professional development moving forward. When we think of a backwards design model, we start with the end in mind and we look at assessment, and I wholeheartedly agree with you. The decision framework that I also spoke to regarding who needs these assessments, how do we use these, how do they drive our instruction, will result from the work that we're doing with the Literacy Leader Network, the Hill for Literacy, as well as the Assessment Mapping Team, as well as professional development from MyView around the platform. How do you extract your data? How do you look at your data? How does the data points help support moving forward with your instruction? But also, too, kind of, there's a lot on the platform. There's a lot. We don't need to do all of it. We can't do all of it. We want through the work of the Curriculum Assessment and Mapping Team and the literacy leaders to identify through the mapping, what are those assessments within each unit of study that reliably assess the student's progress along the way, whether it be formatively or then summatively? I'm not sure if that answered, if that helps answer your question. So, the goal is to, obviously, it's one thing to have all these assessments, but how do you put it into practice through the analysis of what the data is telling you?
And I guess the follow-up question then is, once the educators are get, not just familiar with the assessment tools, but familiar with whatever those assessment tools are telling them about students, is there the requisite professional development so that they understand how to take that information and whether it be tailor instruction or provide enrichment or, you know, there's a number of things you can do with that assessment once you, once you get that back, right? And so I want to make sure that each of these professional development loops is closed. And I'm saying this as somebody, like, my teacher education ceased in 1997. Nobody was talking about assessment in quite this way then, like, it was a radical idea. Now, obviously, I've not been going through professional development for all of those years since 1997, but I can tell you, at my level, when we changed from course objectives to student learning outcomes, which was a very recent change for us, everyone just took that title off and just changed it. Nothing changed in those little bullet points, right? And so I'm saying this is, like, you need to understand what assessment is and how it's different from grading. You have to understand how you can take an assessment and pull the pieces out of that. And I think that that takes time and attention, and it's very different than being focused on learning the material and then teaching the material, right? Like, it's a different skill set, and I want to prioritize that form of professional development, specifically because this graph tells me that there's a good chance a lot of old people like me are still sort of stuck on that, like, I know that word, but I'm not exactly sure what, what I, you know, what the difference is between evaluation and assessment.
And actionable steps.
And actionable steps, and, you know, individuating instruction based on what you get from assessment. Like, they can individuate instruction, but not necessarily correlated with the assessment information.
No, absolutely. And I think moving forward with the professional development initially, we have to understand the platform, but wholeheartedly agree, what within the resource can then the trainers point teachers to, if you're seeing this, here are the resources that you can use to facilitate your instruction to meet your child's needs. And I think the work through a multi-tiered system of support with the Hill and with my literacy coaches moving forward and getting out into the schools, everything we do will start with the data, whether it's in the lower grades, whether it's in the upper grades. Now, what are the actionable steps to fill those gaps in? Absolutely, I agree wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
If I could add just one comment to that, really what we're talking about is we're going back to the pedagogy and we're looking at, you know, differentiated instruction is something that we need to continue to develop across K-12 with our teachers pre-K-12 and identify what are, right, which methodologies within differentiated instruction are we going to say, here are our top three priority, you know, methods of delivery of instruction to address the data that we're identifying so that we can move students who are very close to proficiency, who are, right? It needs to be really diagnosed and targeted. And when we talk about centers, or we talk about groupings, or we talk about, you know, how we're teaching students throughout the continuum, you know, K-12, pre-K-12, is really more about that teacher understanding who's in the classroom, right? How do we group them? Why are we grouping that way? And what is the pedagogy that's appropriate at that time? And I think, you know, Michelle during her presentation has really highlighted that. I think the next steps are part of how do we do the teaching and learning with our teachers around that, including the coaching, the modeling. And so we are planning on doing that specifically at the secondary level, much more so than we have in the past. But to your point, right, there has to be a focus on what is it that we're, you know, it's not just a strategy, it has to be embedded in the units, in the lesson. So, we can talk about project-based learning, but that's a form of DI, right? It's a form of differentiated instruction. How are we going to, so interdisciplinary units is a form of differentiated instruction. So, we need to master those things as teachers and across the district to be able to improve the instruction overall.
Dr. Magnolia, if I can add, Michelle used an important quote in her presentation, and she talked about assessments for learning rather than of the learning. And it's really important, and that's the key piece that she's going to focus in on with teachers, is understanding how that assessment is going to drive and change their instruction and respond to student needs. I thought that quote was key to the moves that are going to be made within MyView.
Thank you. Thank you. Remember Paul?
I like what you said about coaching and modeling because I think all year, all of us have been so concerned about how many new teachers we have that have never taught and aren't certified, and it was concerning. So, that's a good thing. Communication has been a problem for a long, long time, and many of these people have told us that they've reached out, you know, whether it's within their school or, you know, further than just within the school, and haven't been able, so, when you say you're going to go out, are you talking about more of the administration will be heading out to schools too?
I can speak for myself. Yes, I believe we will all be joining out into the schools. So, I've established with teachers who would be willing and want to partner up around Tier One lab classrooms to get the work started, and I'll be working directly with them in their classrooms as well as the coaches, so we can continue to bring it out even further out to the schools. But yes, be working directly within, we'll start with the eight GLEAM schools first, but as we're doing the work, sharing that out to the other 10 schools, and then continuing to get into the other schools and model as well.
Okay. And one of the things you said, that you did do surveys of the curriculum needs in September and October. How do they align to, you know?
I was actually surprised that there were still missing gaps because what we did was we linked the document both times directly to the MyView distribution manager, so he would immediately ship them out to the schools. But obviously, there were still glaring gaps in some of the resources that are missing. So, we're going to do an inventory survey analysis to make sure, as you say, let's get these sooner than later. Let's not wait until the end of the summer, but to ensure that all resources are at their disposal. And some of the resources, and again, not to make any excuses, there were a couple of sets of resources, for example, the Mentor Stacks and the Book Club packs for kids that had been backordered at one point, so they came in a little bit, obviously, later than we would have, would have liked. But we will continue to talk with the schools. We try to work directly with the curriculum instructional teachers, who then can go out into the classrooms to determine what are the needs of the teachers too, so.
And we were hearing from teachers that they, it wasn't clear to them, you know, the people that needed to be supporting them, so it's kind of was a vicious little circle. But the one that has, are there benchmarks or unit assessments available? And it was concerning that, like, 25 teachers said, not sure. That's really concerning.
It is. We have, due to the nature of the cycles that we first started with reading, then we moved into small group instruction with the professional development, and then into writing. And as I said, we will be working with all of the assessments in all of the platform for the initial training coming this fall. But I agree with you, it is concerning, and it's unfortunate, and, you know, a lot, oftentimes with the support of the Department of Ed, who I also meet with monthly, you can't know an entire curriculum in a short amount of a time. It does take time, and they advocate to not mandate necessarily right out of the gate, you know, you have to do this X, Y, and Z, but to provide the professional development. And then, as I said, moving forward into next year, really going deep with, supporting the district with mapping documents that also have the aligned assessments, training them on the platform and how to extract the data from that platform, but also within the mapping, truly landing on and identifying, so the guessing work is, you know, taken away for them in a sense, that we're trying to weed through everything that's in there to identify the most solid assessments that align with the standards within each unit. So, yes, that is the goal, is to have a much more in-depth understanding of the platform, of the resources, and of the assessment tools and how they can be utilized. Often, you need to become familiar with the curriculum before you can actually make some really decisions in which you're saying, this is what we are doing and this is the why behind it. But I agree with you.
And just one last question. Not all of the schools participated. So, did we reach out to find out, you know, the reason for not participating?
That is something that, part of the process moving forward, yes, I think is going to be important to find out why maybe not all of the schools participated.
Yeah.
It's important data to find out.
It really is.
It is. It absolutely is. Thank you.
Can't make change without it.
Nope, you can't. You need everybody's voice.
Remember Gayle?
First of all, I want to thank all the presenters. You did an excellent job, gave us a lot of information. I'm aware that our committee appreciates receiving the raw data from the teacher's survey, really helps me to see what I'm hearing on the phone or when I'm going out into the community is actually what's happening, and that my colleagues hear it also. We adopted many curriculums in the school committee, I mean, in the school committee, and we have improved those, as Mr. Dugan said. But in recent years, we have defined the expectation of the process. Going forward, I'd like to request that a survey report out be incorporated into all curriculum adoptions with only one change to the survey, to eliminate the name of the school where the teacher teaches. Then, in my opinion, it would be truly anonymous, so all the teachers would answer those surveys. And I think that is the root of that problem. Thank you to all the teachers that felt comfortable enough to take the surveys, and I know how busy your days are and appreciate you taking the time to let us hear your voices because your voices matter to me and this committee. While reading over the presentation sent to us yesterday, I can see that the adoptions have brought to light many challenges as well as successes for our teachers. The slide that highlighted this was helpful to our understanding and showed that change can be both difficult and rewarding. I have heard from many teachers that professional development, although delayed, especially with MyView, has been very helpful, and teachers in general feel good about the curriculum they have. Thank you for your meeting with the school committee, and please know how much I appreciate your leadership. My conversation moving forward is not directed to the presenters, but to our new superintendent. Dr. Alvarez, will you please look closely at the interdisciplinary units K to two? You and I have similar views of curriculum from a secondary lens, where I look at my science units as all interdisciplinary units, which always include explanations of how concepts intertwine in the unit. You would look at history probably the same. This is not new, but what I find is missing in the K to two interdisciplinary units is curriculum that has been, has multi-resource that teachers can go to for support for their units. This is the third year of K to two interdisciplinary units. Last year, as a school committee, we voted seven to nothing for MyView curriculum to be given to K through five, so our teachers would have plenty of resources. Looking into the K to two interdisciplinary presentations made me go to the DESI website. I am quoting DESI here. Providing every teacher with high-quality curriculum materials is a system-level condition for success that depends on administrators fulfilling their role. My question to you, Dr. Alvarez, are our level administrators fulfilling their roles? Do our teachers have access to high-quality, standard-aligned curriculum materials that are rigorously reviewed and vetted by academic experts and teachers for alignment for rigorous standards? What is our vetting process, and who are our experts writing this curriculum? Would the K to two interdisciplinary unit pass the scrutiny and evaluated process of the ed reports and curates? In the fall of 2022, I have heard many educators complaining about the rollouts. The teachers at the elementary school level just had too many new curriculums, too much change, and I believe were completely overwhelmed with so many demands. After the professional development was given for grades three to five, from MyView, complaints subsided. However, I continue to hear complaints on the K to two interdisciplinary units. This meeting prompted teachers to reach out and voice their concerns to me again. What sets the K to two interdisciplinary units apart from the other rollouts is that this is year three and teachers are still voicing their concern, such as, they don't receive the units in a timely manner, resources are late, are completely digital, several concerns that students in first and second grade do not have books in their hands for guided reading, standards are missing from these units. Is this the definition of high-quality instructional materials? Teachers tell me language standards are missing. Is it true that the writing process is not included? Does our highest-level administrators know this? Much of the time tonight was bent on discussing performance assessment tasks. I have been hearing about these from teachers from the beginning. Many teachers tell me they do not assess the standards taught in the unit, and are we clear that they do? And if so, then, why do And if so, then why do our teachers not know that, what they're assessing or understand what they're doing? Last but not least, I have heard from new teachers and veteran teachers alike who speak about how much time these units require to plan because they are provided with simply an outline. And so many also talk about struggling how to plan using that outline. The veteran teachers as well as I worry about our new teachers especially. Another quote from DESI, every teacher deserves access to high-quality instructional materials in that a high-quality curriculum materials are a cornerstone of Massachusetts' tiered system of support. So Dr. Alvarez, could you meet with all the stakeholders in the group individually in a setting where they would feel free to speak to you? Please meet with the teachers, writers of the curriculum, principals, coaches, and all departments connected to the work and understand their concern and evaluate this curriculum that is servicing our youngest students so that we can move ahead and they can have the resources. And I, I really still think it should be My View K to five. Thank you for listening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Gailey. And absolutely, in working with the curriculum team, there will be, in fact, we're starting just a preliminary review of the resources because there are a lot of duplicate resources as well that we need to scale back on and really become proficient and masters of what we do need to use and clearly identify what is not just only the core, but what does tier one intervention look like? What is a tier two? When do you move to a tier two intervention? When do you move to a tier three intervention? And that has to have clarity both for the teacher as well as for our leaders who are giving the clinical feedback to teachers to grow and develop, right? As well as our coaches. And absolutely, I think there was a question asked before about the P, the professional development as well and whether this team, not just this team, but our larger team of assistant directors would be, they are the experts and they will be modeling and coaching and supporting teachers in the classroom as well, as well as principals. You know, we need to have leadership development in order for our leaders to be able to do that, this teacher feedback in a non-evaluative way, right? To learn, grow, and develop their teaching skills and, and teaching repertoire on a daily basis. And so that, that will also be taking place. But absolutely, I've written down your requests and there will be a review of the programs.
Could I submit this?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And we, and, and it will be, you know, not just a, a presentation, but it will include the correlation of student data and student achievement, whatever those points of assessment are, as well as what is happening with the teacher learning piece in terms of, you know, how are we supporting teachers in the classroom and the materials that they, that go along with that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Great. Well, thank you so much to everyone for their presentation. Thank you as well to all the educators that, that shared their, their feedback and have been working on this. And, you know, just really appreciate everyone's efforts to, to help us move forward to address these issues and, and, and continue to advance these, these goals that we all share. So thank, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the school committee for your, for your questions as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just going to recess.
Oh, thank you, Tiffany.
... appropriation of $2.1 million. However, 1.4 million of that has to go towards Essex Tech tuition. And normally that cost was always, since I've been here, been handled by the city. But he asked that we put it in our budget, so that's 1.4 million. But it doesn't affect anything in the reality because at the end of the year, that's one of those chargebacks to meet net school spending. So whether it's in my budget or whether it's in the city's budget, it doesn't affect anything from that perspective. So it's just a reallocation of the funds to our budget. So that left us with approximately about 725, yes, 725,000 left to allocate. And I gave you a new sheet of all the ins and outs, the staffing sheet, and on the new one, anything we changed from the last one is highlighted in yellow, just to make your reference point a little easier so you can see what we added from that point, from the last budget book. So that's really what it is, but there were some other changes on pages. So it's just easier to give you a new version than try to substitute pages in and get more confusing. So at that point, that's the summary. So there's only really a little, a few additional adds from the previous version. So you can look through that. If we can answer any questions, we'll clearly do that.
Member Cass Youngs.
Thank you so much, Kevin, for that, you provided with the extras and the budget as well has been a long process to digest. I'm just going to work my top three right now and then I'm, I'll, I'll give time. The first area of focus is transportation. I want to have a conversation around some of the, the line items that, that we're seeing in transportation. And, and, and I know we've had a pretty significant blow this year as Mr. Hegan had passed. That operation for years has been Dave's operation. He worked robust. He, he did a lot of people's jobs, just if folks in the room are not familiar, that he did so many different things that, to be honest with you, I'm surprised, I don't know. He's, he did a lot. And this year, we, we had some transformations. I know there were some positions that were discussed or in budget proposals that, I know there was one additional clerical staff added, I think we discussed this before, and there might have been two others declined. I think there was three ask and two, one was added, but two of those positions weren't for transportation. I just wanted to kind of clarify that, just kind of as I'm looking at these lines, because I know this, this transportation department is growing. It looks like we're going to be potentially pre-K expansion, athletics. So transportation looks like it's, it's going to be increasing in capacity. So when I think about burnout across our whole district, this, this transportation for me really stood out. I'm not sure what we are doing to address this. I just would like to kind of have a conversation around certain, I think there was a apparent liaison position that was asked and it wasn't, I guess it wasn't provided.
So there were multiple requests in her budget requests. We did add an additional assistant database manager. You can see that it went from one to two. That was a new add. It will be bilingual required because that's another piece that is a challenge in the transportation office is that families, you know, who speak other languages, it's, it's not as, it's not as smooth a conversation when you can't just speak in your native language with someone who also speaks that language. And so we're being intentional that that position will be posted as bilingual. But, you know, tough, within any budget process, tough decisions, you know, have to be made. And unfortunately, you know, we did add a, a team member in that office. And certainly we will keep our eye on that office as we do with anything throughout the year, you know, to reevaluate if other changes need to happen.
Can I add on?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let me, I'm gonna go to the security. And then this is kind of, this kind of goes into Member Dugan's point on question two around the security system upgrades. I know that we, there's a $612,000, $612,627 increase for a, a security update that costs, I believe, over, I think it was 4.5 million for a 10-year deal. I think that, that was part of that. It's a full package, I believe, part of that process. Is this the start of a payment plan? Is that what I'm looking at?
Kevin, do you want to answer that one?
At this point, we wanted to allocate some funds because we haven't finalized the total cost. We've been looking at one vendor and our technology director's looking at a second vendor. So we wanted to put some funds aside to allocate for this project, but the goal will be to pay it over multiple years, not all at once, because it's going to take, to do this system, it's going to take a minimum of two, almost three years to get it done because of all the schools we want to do. It's just going to take time and they can't do it all at once. So the, the goal was to put some funds there until we finalize it and that's what we'd like to do. Once we get a vendor, we'll let you know what we're doing and how it's going to affect. But that at least gets us a first year payment towards the project.
So right now, we're operating with the outdated security, are we, is, is our system outdated? I don't want to say it like that, but are we operating at a?
So, so I will say that the, the cameras have been updated over the years. I remember when the, the very first system went in, the video was very grainy, it was hard to see details, and then they upgraded the cameras. It was, it's much clearer. But even with those updates, it's time to update again. Kevin, how long ago was that? It was a while ago.
I've been, I'd say about 13 years ago. I did it with Juan Ferrari when I first got here.
And so we are looking at updating the system. You know, there's, the, one of the companies that we had a presentation with shared some great components to it that really could add to the security of a building. We had a presentation from a middle school about vape detectors. That particular company had that as part, you know, part of what they offer. But with anything, you want to vet multiple companies and make sure that we're doing our due diligence there. But we are committed to looking at security and updating.
So the 612, that, that number, we will continue to hope, to put that in that line item for future investments for updating our security systems. And the goal is between two, three years to secure that. And we're still shopping around. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And, and our district's so, I mean, we have 27 schools, right? And so you're not going to get all 27 schools up, all updated in one year. So it makes sense that it would be over a series of years.
I, I would like to also, when the data assessment team, I think getting the data around where our highest frequent volume is, I think the, the more, I guess, I don't say behavioral, the more, I guess you could target certain schools that really need to get prioritized.
Yeah.
So I guess we, if, we, we start with the highest priority and work our way down, I guess we figure out that.
Sometimes we start with the larger schools, right? Because, and typically the larger schools have the higher priority anyways, we just share numbers of kids.
Appreciate that. And then the campus monitors, we're going up three positions or?
Correct. Two at Lynn English and one at Lynn Tech. Lynn Tech voiced a concern around the crossing of the street to get to, from the main building to the annex. And they wanted to add another monitor for, you know, safety reasons. And we agreed that, you know, I, I can't tell you how many times I've driven, you know, to go to a, a school visit and gone by there and kids are crossing and I, I get the chills. We need someone there. And so that is the purpose of that one. And then Lynn English, it's share numbers of, of students. We need additional support there.
How did you come down? So what's, what's, what's a healthy staffing number? I was just curious to?
I think Lynn English has four at this point. This will bring them up to six. Plus they will have, the SRO is still in the budget from last year, so we're still waiting to hear from Chief Ready. But he, last I spoke to him, you know, if, if it looks good that we're going to have some, have them at English and Classical. Then we also, in, especially in the larger schools, Lynn English and Classical have the La Russa Westa monitors, the family monitors, and they are part of the monitor union. They, that will continue, we will continue to, to have them. So they've got a good number of staff already, but Lynn English just, you know, sheerly on the number of enrolled students. You know, they, they just need more support to, to keep kids toe in the line.
How about Fecto Larry?
Fecto has, let's see, Fecto has, I think, one monitor?
And a school resource.
And a school resource officer.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you, Ken.
And for athletics, I want to go take a look on athletics around, I think Member Dugan also had this in his questions around the fitness equipment. Sorry.
There's just a point of order from the Capitol about the format here, about whether we're asking questions now and answering them. about whether we're asking questions now and answering them. I mean...
I don't know if I had that on. Point of order about whether we're asking questions and answering them. Obviously, submitting the questions in advance and giving the administration a chance to prepare a response was the preference that the administration communicated. And, you know, I think, I do think it's helpful. But, you know, it's within the purview of a committee member, I think, given the agenda item to raise the questions this evening. And I don't...
And I have no problem with that. I'm just asking because if I submitted mine, then I can clear them up tonight.
Yeah. It'd be, it's with your choice there, so.
Would you want me to just hold off?
No, that's...
Okay.
I think it's fine.
I apologize, I just...
Some people listening would like to know things that are in the budget. So it makes sense that you ask them and they'll hear.
Yeah, I mean, either way works, right? The point is that we get the questions asked and answered. I think there's a preference from the administration to receive them and be able to think about them and communicate them and then share with everyone so that everybody gets the answer regardless. I think in prior years, we've also posted those questions and answers on the website with the budget so that they're available for anyone at any point.
I'll just wrap up my, and then I'll go into, I think I said I'll go through my last, not last question. Not last question, but just, yeah. So athletics, so I remember last budget season, we talked about equipment repairs and fitness maintenance replacements. I'm not sure where we were at with the weight room upgrades or updates. I know there was conversations around having modifications done. I'm looking at the line items and I can already tell you that doesn't fit. Like, I saw the elliptical, I seen like the items that we were getting, but that's not kind of the updates that I was looking for. My constituents were, we were thinking like a facility update that's going to be a little bit more... Monitored. Weight, I actually took a tour. I saw the weight rooms. Not the most, and I think Lynn English still has the same weights from when I was there. So I think...
They weigh the same. They weigh the same as they did when you were there.
You know what? Good point, but I think you gotta go take a visit. They still, I just, I just really, no, I just want to be clear on athletic updates within the weight room facilities. I think they're long overdue. I wasn't sure where we were. I know there was a lot of needs across the district with facility updates. And I know that we did allocate for HVAC. We allocated where the highest needs were. I just would like to see, I think we have to do better in the fitness equipment piece. I think there's a lot of grant opportunity for these projects. And I know that our city values sport. Like, sport's very important in this city. And I had lots of constituents voice concerns around this area particularly. I know I explained it's a little complicated when it comes to facility updates and that these type of projects take a cost analysis and figure out, we have to figure out strategies to fund those projects. I just, I think fitness equipment, though, it's not facility updates. I think like dumbbells and like weight, like the squat racks, like leg extend, like machines. Like, there's a lot of opportunity. I don't even know if we've ever met with vendors or I don't know if that's something that our athletic directors were doing. Could you guys just kind of elaborate a little bit within the scope of what I'm talking about here? Or Kevin?
Kevin?
Sorry. Usually, I'm looking, you know what? Kevin, I'm looking at your seat and I'm realizing you're not there. So I should start looking at the computer? Sorry. Did you hear that?
Turn you so they can see you.
Sorry, Kevin.
As far as the athletics, I know we received something about the tread bills they were buying and things of that nature. As far as the overall, I mean, I'd have to check with her as far as what's the condition of everything, you know, through maybe the athletic directors and get a report back on that. So I'm not familiar what's exactly in those rooms at this time.
I think I had...
Nope, Dr. Alvarez.
Oh.
I just wanted to share, Member Castellanos, that, you know, one of the things that we are looking ahead, right, is building a student-athlete comprehensive program. And that would include an upgrade of the athletic facilities, you know, for athletes to be able to condition and train, not just, you know, use a basketball court, for example. In the interim, while we do that assessment, one of the things that I have tentatively worked out with the Y is to be able to have our student-athletes participate in a year-round membership until such time that we're able to. That would give us at least a year to be able to assess, plan, you know, find the funds and then, you know, go ahead and do those types of upgrades. But that way, at least students would have a space. They would have equipment year-round, potentially meals and trainers to be able to condition. And, you know, hopefully, really taking advantage of the fact that we do have the athletic talent within Lynn to be able to send students to explore other opportunities, right, as they further their careers and college experiences.
Well, part of my, that's, I appreciate that insight and I really do. And the coaches too, like the people that are there with our student-athletes, they, they're there. They, a lot of them come out their pockets to fund a lot of the camps. There's other resources that they pull out of their own pockets that were, you know, I go, I could talk for days about how amazing our coaches are. Very underpaid, I'll tell you that. Because if you go down south, you got some coaches making $200,000 as a head football coach. So I think we got to do better in athletics. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. I have Member Gailey, Member Pena, and Member Capola. And again, you, folks are free to submit the questions and give people an opportunity to respond. Yeah, Member Gailey.
Mia Nicholson, I'm going to submit my questions at another time.
Okay.
Soon.
And, you know, part of the value, I think, in the way this has been set up is we'll have multiple opportunities for this discussion. Okay. Member Pena.
All right, so I'm just going to limit it to two. So I think as last meeting, I brought up transportation. That department is growing, we understood. And, you know, when Dave Hegan passed away, you know, he, like Brian, just echoing what Brian said, he did a lot of things, but he also managed two departments, right, where he can kind of move staff here and there, you know, where you can probably utilize some staff. But I think they need another clerk in there, especially, you know, like you said, a bilingual clerk. I happened to be here Tuesday and I think I just called and when you, you know, it's, you know, right now, currently, there's only one person that can speak Spanish and that's the manager. Yeah, the transportation manager, which, you know, it's kind of, we need, we could use another clerk in there, especially a bilingual clerk. I know you can add another database manager, you know, but I think we could use another clerk in there. It's growing, you know, we had a lot of number of issues there, you know, especially when Dave passed away. So, you know, we're still dealing with a lot of things. A lot of staff are working a lot on the weekends, you know. Our athletics programs are growing, you know, we just added JV, you know, so for next year. And, you know, I think they could use, really, really use another clerk in there, you know. So we could have two assistant managers, you know, database manager. And I know you said the requirement for that, you're looking for bilingual preference. Yeah. I like to see another clerk added to that. I mean, I think they're growing, they're important, you know, they're, I mean, they're going through a lot of things in there and they could really use the help. And I think another, you know, bilingual clerk in there would be very, very helpful. My other thing was around the athletics, just echo what Brian was talking about. I know, I, when I was, you know, he did mention, you know, the new equipment, things that are out there, you know. There's a lot of air, you know, air equipment that's, that's based on, kids don't injure themselves anymore, you know. There's a lot of new technology, a lot of new, new, up-to-date stuff. I work at the Y, so I see all the new equipment that's around. So I just wondered if the, you know, any of the athletic directors or Kevin, if they're going to explore into seeing any vendors, you know, that are out there for updating the equipment. You know, I understand that the weights is the same, but there's a lot of new technology so those kids don't get hurt or athletes don't get as hurt as they used to, right, Brian?
Yeah, no, there's...
Not like the free weight, but there's a lot of, a lot of new equipment and stuff that's out there that's available. And I think it's saying that we can update our athletic programs. Like Dr. Alvarez said, you know, we have a lot of new, you know, we have a lot of good athletes out of Lynn. And I was one of the co-founders of New England Youth Football Task Force. And the purpose of that is to have, because normally in New England, our football players don't play year-round as when you go down south for Texas. So, you know, like Brian said, the competition on the athletes are, you know, they're tremendous, but they play all year-round. So part of, you know, training our athletes and, you know, I like to see us move forward in that, maybe updating our equipment a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Capola.
First of all, one good thing that I did see is there weren't a lot of specialized classrooms being moved from school to school. In the past, that's been a real problem. But there is still one being moved from Druids to Hood. And, you know, they're young kids, K to...
They're pre-K.
Pre-K and K. Yeah. And these are a reason to...
Yeah, I can explain. So Druids has two interative pre-Ks right now at Druids. Druids needs to open, I don't know what grade, third grade, another third-grade class due to enrollment. But more importantly, and there will be a presentation at another meeting with the help of Jackie Gallo, if she's still here, to give an overview of some of the pre-K changes and additions that are happening and to give an update on the grants that Jackie oversees and the new seats that are going to be offered. So the moving of these two pre-Ks is intentional because we want to keep them together and create an early childhood center. And so Druids is opening a new Gen Ed third grade and then they're receiving a new DDK to two. There's a new classroom that needs to be opened and Druids is slotted for it.
Okay. All right. And I noticed that the, at Lynn Tech, the life skills teacher and para were cut out. Is the program decreasing or did I read it wrong?
No, I think I would have to, I'm going to have to...
Well, you can check.
Yeah. I'm going to have to check with Jessica on that one. I, there is a reason, I'm just not, I don't want to say something if it's wrong.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing is the welcome center had a cut in a clerk. Is there any particular reason?
It's solely around that they don't really need the position. And Kevin, was it adding a different position?
They added a different type of position.
No, they added the previously added one, I think, last year. And they said they just don't need that position at this time.
Okay. And I had the same question about the security system. And the other thing is the Lynn English Life Skills Program, they have been asking for transportation. The program is supposed to be taking them out into the community and there isn't any transportation. So have we added that in? Because it's gone the whole year. We have parents who are, you know, driving kids and, you know, whether it's after-school, you know, sports, extended day or whatever, it's a problem.
I don't know if Dr. Alvarez, if you want to touch base on or share with them your meeting and...
Sure. What I am aware of, I've met with the life skills parents from Lynn English, I believe, three times already in looking at programmatic equity, realigning the courses and making sure that our high school programs and life skills and then obviously going back to, as well as the middle school courses, to make sure that students are being offered, especially the electives as well, that they have, are entitled to and documented on their IEPs. The transportation has come up as an issue, but more of a, it's been around the Wednesday early release. Not exactly what you're describing, but I will definitely look into it. And since we do have a meeting coming up in June, we will bring it back up and make sure that there isn't a further need around any activities or there have been any additional problems with transporting students after school. I definitely will ask that.
I don't know what a liability would be if we're asking a parent to pick a child, you know, their child. I know, I understand it's their child, but it's during our school time, you know, to transport them to a job.
Yeah, I think currently, when they go to a vocational experience, we do transport them. I don't know that...
And that, but they come back to school, they don't, they typically, they're not picked up at the location right now where they do the experience. So I think, and we're, the team is looking at opportunities for students to commit to vocational work experience on a regular basis. So that would also require transportation around that.
Great. And just my very last one, the fine arts uniforms, you know, new uniforms and cleaning. We took care of the athletes, but I know this $2,000 added here, but it's a very small amount. It's only $17,000. And you're talking about cleaning all the uniforms. And some of the uniforms look old. So I know it's a, it's a small request compared to the size of our budget.
She just, she just, Fin Arts just was purchasing some additional uniforms right now. It just went through, going through the budget process and approval for a purchase order. I don't know how much, but I know there was some purchases I went through last week.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
I would add one more.
Yeah, Member Castellanos.
Sorry, I apologize. I was just waiting for everybody. And then next time, we'll have another load of opportunity, right? Was that what I heard? Was that something that you said?
Yeah, yeah, so this will be on the agenda again at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay. Caught that. So this is coming from some staff. There was, I reached out to my stakeholders, you know, according to the Student Inclusivity Panel this morning, you know, this morning, this today, I heard, it's interesting because you have to reach out to your stakeholders. Some of my stakeholders are staff. And they asked about burnout prevention, teacher-driven line items to support wellness, conferences, leadership retreats, development. I know the teachers' union does support them, very much so. But in, within the budget, what are we doing to, to address burnout? Because we, as we talked about the pandemic, I think we mentioned it earlier, when we, the rollouts and staff felt that and there's still, a lot of folks are burnt out, right? So what is...
So I can tell you that in collaboration with Sheila O'Neill, we had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with an organization called Educators Thriving. This year, we will be doing a survey, an anonymous survey. And it's about getting feedback, to hear from teachers about the burnout, about their well-being, how we can support that. There are also questions about how the school supports them, how their, the administrators in the schools support them, how the district supports them. So it's going to give us data that we then can analyze. And then there are, like, I don't want to call them PD sessions because they're really not PD sessions. They're more like wellness sessions. And so once we get this data, then we'll look at that and evaluate what's the next steps. But we've been working with Sheila on that.
Thank you.
Because we also care very much about their well-being.
Well, I think they let me know.
As the children said, we need to make sure that there's a space for when you're stressed out.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for the further questions and obviously, please continue to submit them. Okay. Next item, our field trip request. First one is English grade 12 to Chuck Stirs on May 25th.
I highly recommend, another stress reliever.
To the World School Committee? Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Next is English Classical and Tech Trio to Southern Maine on May 9th.
Yes, so that, this, if you recall, was in our pack at the last meeting, but there was some information that was missing. They already did this trip the other day, but um, I would have recommended it then. I just wanted to make sure we had the right information, so I would, they already went, so just say yes.
World School Committee?
So moved? Yes, I mean.
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Next is a request to accept a donation of $3,000 from Tommy Vitera on behalf of the Autism Acceptance Fundraiser to Shoemaker Elementary for benefit of the coach program.
And I highly recommend approval of this, and we are so grateful to any of the donations we get, but in particular, that program um, is amazing and this money will be a great support for that program.
So moved. Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Request to accept a donation of $200 from Lynn Business Ed Foundation to Cabot Elementary.
I would like it to be approved, please.
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Lynn Teachers Union Local 1037 requests that a union leave of absence be granted to the union president for the 2023-24 school year.
I was just thinking that same thing, Donna. I was gonna, mm, of course.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Member Capola, Personnel Subcommittee.
Yes, we have um, two motions that were made. First one was um, to post the Executive Director of Innovation and Grants.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And the next motion was to um, the approval to post a third deputy position with a friendly amendment on qualifications, number six, there'd be experience in the secondary level. Removing strongly preferred.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Well, we'd like to uh, make a motion to amend the agenda to move the executive sessions to the end of the agenda.
So moved?
So moved.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Superintendent?
Uh, I actually have a question before I read my report. Do you get, if I do Z-Admin, do you get those emails?
The what?
No, okay. So I want to share with you, this week is a special week every year. It's teacher and, I always say teacher and staff Appreciation Week. And even here, we appreciate our staff and acknowledge them. My quote for this report is, "Behind every child who believes in themselves is a teacher who believed in them first." It's hard to believe that May is already here and that our school year is quickly coming to an end in just a little over a month. This year has been a challenge, to say the least. We've struggled through the integration of a new student information system, grappled with the implementation of many new curriculum resources and had to adjust to many new staffing changes. It is years like this, uh, this one, that truly show the grit and stamina that make up great educators. We continue to be so grateful for the way our Lynn Public School family has worked together to make this a successful year for our kids and our community. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week and we want to share our heartfelt gratitude with our 2,000-plus teachers and staff, a special group of people we truly admire. You all are incredible heroes who have approached this uniquely challenging school year with such grace, determination and dedication for our students, families and community. We're grateful every single day for the brilliant teachers in our district who are shaping our children's educational journey. Although we have, although we have always had a deep admiration for teachers and staff, we have never been prouder of all of you for the way that you have refused to let anything keep you from serving our students this year. As our heroes in education, you ensure that our goal of excellence and innovation in education continues for our students by stretching and pushing yourselves. Your sacrifice, strength and bravery are remarkable as you continue growing, learning and innovating to provide our students with high-quality learning experiences. Our teachers and staff have moved the world forward for our kids and our community and you are worthy of our celebration today and every day of the year. We honor you, our teachers and staff, by sharing our appreciation with you. We see you and we are so grateful for you. Thank you for what you do for our kids. You make all of us so proud and happy to call Lynn Public Schools our home. We continue to move forward with the Pickering Building Project. The Preferred Schematic Report was submitted to MSBA on April 27th for review and will be presented to the MSBA Facilities Assessment Subcommittee on May 17th to present our educational plan and site proposal for possible approval. The Board of Directors will then need to approve our plan on June 21st. A Construction Manager at Risk Selection Committee has been created and will be reviewing applications over the next few weeks. They actually started that process today. This committee will conduct interviews on June 5th and 6th for the selection of this position. As you are aware, this week, North Shore Community College made an announcement to our seniors at each high school that they are being offered direct acceptance as well as a $500 scholarship from North Shore Community College. North Shore already has received applications from all three high schools interested in taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity. And finally, as our year quickly approaches an end, our seniors are preparing to finalize their Lynn Public School experience and get ready to embark on the next journey in their future. They have their senior week, prom, senior trips, all ahead of them. I think we can all remember our own senior years and the excitement that connect, uh, that is connected to this special time in their life. I want to share the dates of our high school graduations, please put them in your calendars. It will be held again at Manning Field, Thursday, June 1st, 9:00 AM, Fecto Leary, 1 o'clock, Lynn English, and then Friday, June 2nd, 9:00 AM, LVTI and 1 o'clock, Lynn Classical. Rain dates are June 5th and 6th, and we look forward to celebrating with our seniors on their special day.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for executive session, if you could just specify where we're going?
Second?
Make a motion to go into executive session to approve the executive session minutes from March 30th, 23rd, they request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Deborah Gereo, Kim Powers.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion to return to regular session.
I I move that we return to regular session.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
We're just gonna take the form of vote at the next meeting after we had the opportunity to confirm with the, with the parties involved, so.
Like to move to adjourn?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.